Becky?
Yeah.
How do I make you co-host?
Um, you go that little video camera?
Alright, little video camera.
By your name, uh, oh, no, my, by my name, and then you'll click, it'll say more when you put your cursor on it.
Alright, give me, give me a sec here.
So you bring up the part.
Alright. My co-host, yes, Mitt. Close. So I'm guessing the reason it hadn't started yet is because I don't see Dan here yet.
I don't either.
So I think Dan was gonna host, so you're in, and I, I can leave now, I think.
Yes.
And it won't, it won't be a disaster, and you can call me if it is.
Okay. It worked last time, too, thank you.
Yep, alright, bye, everybody.
Bye, thank you so much, Grace, I appreciate it.
Becky, we're waiting on Dan?
Yes, and I'm trying to locate his cellphone number.
Okay. He said he's having technical difficulties getting in, Becky?
Um, right, um, I don't see.
The right Zoom link?
It's on the calendar, oh, if you're talking to him, Jen, can you tell him to use the one on the calendar? For school committee?
Yeah, it was really confusing, I was using the wrong one.
Well, they're the same.
They are the same, there were two different ones, though, on the select board, on one of those emails.
Um, okay, I didn't send them, Grace was handling it, so I'm a little.
I just sent him a text and told him to use the one on the calendar that said "school committee," so hopefully, but I had trouble getting in.
Well, we, you all had trouble getting in because Dan wasn't here, and he was set up to be the host. So, um, Grace came in as, she was able to come in as host and make me the host.
Okay.
And I'm seated, so there's no waiting rooms, so. Um, well, wait, before we start, I just want the select board to know that Melissa is, um, stuck at work. So she might not make it tonight, um, she's, she'll let me know if she can get in, but I'll let her know that we're running late. In case she gets freed up. Oh, there's 21 participants now. Should mean he's.
Okay.
There you go. So mute and unmute.
Alright, I got it.
Got it.
Alright, whoa.
Got it.
Okay. Can you see me and hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you all, sorry, I had to go to a, my mind wasn't working, so I'm at somebody else's house, my sister's.
Wow.
Okay.
Sister for us.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
So I apologize to everybody, and I'll try to speak slowly so that you can all hear me. It looks glitchy. So, school committee will call the meeting to order. And first item on the agenda is going to be appointment of the next school committee member. I appreciate everybody's patience, uh, it was difficult to coordinate the two committees. I got confirmation yesterday when I was in Maine, uh, on a trail, and I was very happy that, the members who had sent in their applications were willing to come in on such last notice, so thank you all very much. So, I think everyone is aware of the position, it's a one-year position.
Dan, can I just call the, um, meeting of the Shootsberry Elementary Board to order?
Yes.
Thanks.
So it's a one-year position, and then after that, uh, the position would be, uh, open for elections, uh, and that will happen at the next, uh, annual town meeting. Okay, so that said, I think I sent everyone a little bit of how the process will be. I first wanna thank everyone who did apply, uh, for the open position, it's always nice to have people that are interested in serving, so thank you very much. Uh, the, the appointment will be for one person, there were four applicants. I want you to all know that all of you are valued, and we appreciate your, um, stepping up to the plate and looking to serve. I'm certain that next year, there will be openings on the school committee, and you can apply, so if you do not get selected for this interim period, please don't be disappointed. What will happen is, we'll ask each person to say a little bit about themselves, we have it in order. And then, uh, we will have, any of the members of the school committee or the select board can make a motion to appoint a person. Uh, there will be a second, and then a roll call vote from the school committee members, as well as the select board members. Then, uh, if there is a second motion, uh, then we will, with a second, we'll continue on, and then we will, uh, see who has the highest number of, of votes. Rita, I'll ask if you can also tally, I will tally, and we'll make sure so that we're both accurate. Okay? So, uh, Ethan, if you'd like to say a few things about yourself, I'd appreciate it.
Thanks, um, uh, I was excited to see that, uh, some people actually had, uh, applied for this position, um, as well. Um, I'll just reiterate a couple of things that I sort of like put in my letter, um, uh, so I'm the father of two children, uh, who attend, uh, Shootsberry Elementary currently, um, second grader and, uh, a new preschooler. Uh, we moved to Shootsberry in 2013, um, I've become interested in our local government recently, I've been, uh, coming to some school committee meetings. Um, I would have been interested in, um, running for the, 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 the last position that was open, um, but my wife is planning on taking sabbatical next year, and so I wouldn't be able to serve a full term, and so, one of the things I wanna be upfront about is that I'm someone who could serve this one-year term, and then would not run for an additional term, and so, if you're looking for someone who would be able to continue on afterwards, I would not be a good choice, um, uh, uh, from that perspective. Um, but if you want someone who's just gonna fill the position in for a year, um, that would be a good fit for me and my family. Um, so, um, a little bit about myself, um, my current job is I'm the president of a political nonprofit that I founded, um, called Swing Left. Um, you know, it's, I run an organization with a six million annual budget, forty employees, over a million, uh, members, grassroots groups across the country. Uh, before my career in politics, I worked as a journalist and teacher, um, I've taught classes online and in person, um, I've, I've worked as a journalist, um, writing for publications like the New York Times, uh, Sports Illustrated and other places, and I've also done some product and curriculum consulting, um, for K-12 startups, um, so I've kind of had a career just across the board in a lot of different areas. The reason I volunteered, um, for this position was simply because I knew just what a critical year this was for our school and for our children, and, and, and how complicated it was going to be, um, just in terms of all the normal business that would have to be enacted, which I got a sense of from some of the meetings that I've, that I've attended, but also just all the difficult decision-making around, uh, COVID and vaccinations and masking and, uh, uh, things like that, and so, um, my interest was simply in terms of, like, uh, I've, I've seen the, the, the wonderful work that, um, uh, Jackie and the, uh, the teachers have done over the last year, and how much they've, they've borne, and I just wanted to volunteer to do my part to help, make, you know, good decisions that would best serve our community and kids. Um, um, but like I said, I was super excited that, uh, so many other people have also volunteered, uh, to step up for it, and I'm sure, um, we'll have, uh, you'll have some great options in terms of, uh, someone who can help, um, support our community and our school. Um, so, uh, thanks so much, and I'm, I'm, I'm happy to serve for the year, uh, if you guys want me to, and otherwise, I'm happy to support, uh, however help I can.
Thank you, Ethan, I really appreciate that, uh, as I said, I, I'm excited that we have four great candidates, and I appreciate your support, no matter what you do. I know, Ethan, that you did mention that you needed, uh, to head out early, so you can head out anytime you'd like, if we see you disappear from the screen, we'll know why, okay?
Thanks, my guest actually had to cancel because of, you know, COVID symptoms, you know, as is, as is the, uh, the thing these days.
Okay, well, thank you. Alright, Jean.
Hi there, everybody, um, this is Jeannie, I pronounce it Jeannie, um, and it's very good to see everybody, and I'm really, uh, thrilled to, to be able to, to join this meeting, and, um, have just a few things that, that, uh, I would, first of all, say, Ethan nailed, nailed a lot of that, what, what's happened in the last year, and, you know, are, uh, real concerned about, you know, the decisions going into the school, so I, I was interested in serving on this committee because I care, I, I wanna know what the decisions are that are being made that affect our, the teachers, the staff, uh, our town, uh, but just the, the students, the students and their families, uh, in particular. Um, I don't, I don't have very much to add to that, I, other than I'd be, uh, happy to contribute in whatever way, and it would be an honor to serve, and, you know, I would hope that, that I could do my best in, um, providing that, fulfilling that role, um, on the committee. And I guess finally, just that I have two kids that are, that are presently in the school system, so, uh, just, you know, that, that connection to, to all the, the teachers and, uh, staff and, and the families, so I'd be happy to serve, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jeannie, and I'm sorry I pronounced your name wrong.
It, it's, it can go either way sometimes. No problem.
And I appreciate everybody's patience, I feel a little discombobulated, so, thank you. Alright, Julie.
That's me, hey, everybody. Um, so I also have two students in the school, but I have actually, um, had kids in the school since 2010. I have a, a son, and, um, he's in high school now, and two twin daughters who are in fourth grade, and are so happy to be back at SES. I guess I threw my hat in the ring because I think that I have some, um, unique perspective to bring to the table, I have, um, two kids who were, I fostered and then adopted, and so I have a little bit of experience with the DCF, um, system, and kind of how that had to be navigated, and those specific issues, um, and I also have a son with autism, and so, I've worked really closely for many years, um, with the special ed team, but also all of the classroom teachers at SES, and have had, an amazing experience with all of them. I also work, I've worked for about twenty years at Hampshire College, and now I work at UMass, and I do, uh, stewardship and donor relations, and through that, work, I, um, have had a lot of experience in thinking about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and access to educational resources, and, and looking sort of systematically at policies in order to make sure that everyone's needs are being considered, and different perspectives are in the room. And, that's it, um, I've been a, a part of this community since 2006, and I'm happy to recognize lots of faces here, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, and Mary Lou.
Hi. So, I'm Mary Lou Conca, I think you had me down as Pharaoh, Pharaoh is my maiden name. Um, I've lived in Shootsberry since 2005. I, I really don't know where to begin to tell you about myself, I, um, am the mother of two adult children, the grandmother of five. I, um, have been in the field of education since 1988, when I became a preschool teacher. And what I think I have best to offer is, um, I feel personally about myself that I'm the voice of people who are, um, ordinarily not heard, within the greater system. I do a lot of advocacy, wherein I come in with single parents, and sit in front of, um, administrators in the special education office to, um, to just be there with them. Um, it's quite difficult, all the jargon, et cetera, that is thrown out there. I sent in a letter, I could read a little bit from it, I, um, am a longtime educator. I hold a degree from Aquinas College in Newton, Massachusetts, as well as, um, I have a Bachelor of Arts cum laude, from the University Amherst Campus in liberal arts with a concentration in young children's learning. Again, my seat on the school committee, I feel I would be the voice of people who are not heard. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary Lou, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, I'm, I'm sitting here holding the mic, the, um, cellphone in one hand, and, so forgive me if it's shaky.
No problem.
Thank you.
Um, so before we actually, uh, take any motions and seconds, maybe, uh, the school committee should just identify who they are, and then the select board, so we know who will be, who will be doing this. So I'm Dan Hay, uh, I'm the chair of the school committee.
Uh, I'll go, my name is Lauren Thomas-Pequen, and I'm on the school committee.
Bethany Rose, school committee.
And is that it?
Full of members. Committee.
Okay. Alright, select board.
Um, Rita Farrell, I'm the chair of the select board. Eric, you're muted. Can you hear us, Eric? You have, you're muted.
Oh, here I go, um, Eric Stalker, select board.
And the third member of the select board, um, got held up at work this evening, Melissa Makepeace O'Neill, so she might join us late, but doesn't look like she'll be here.
No problem, as long as we have the quorum of the two of you, that's great, so thank you. Alright, so I will entertain any motions to appoint a person to fill the position on the school committee for a one-year term.
Um, I'll move to appoint Julie Martel to the school committee.
I'll second that.
Okay. We will need a roll call vote for all those in favor of appointing Julie. Lauren, do you wanna begin? So it's either yay or nay.
Uh, yay, Lauren Thomas-Pequen, yay.
Deuce Sullivan, yay.
Bethany Rose, yay.
Dan Hayes, yay.
Eric Stalker, yay.
And Rita Farrell, yay.
Okay. Is there any other motions, is there another motion? While anyone's thinking, I wanna say a few things. Again, I appreciate everybody, uh, I see some hands going up. Linda?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, say I think that the select board has to make their own motion.
Oh, okay. Thank you, um, I make a motion that, um, no, Becky, are you saying no?
I, I don't think you have to, but you might as well do it to be safe, but I don't think it's necessary because it's a roll call vote of both, uh, both committees. Um, but go ahead and do it, just to be safe.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint, um, Julie Martel to the Shootsberry School Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Well, you'll need a second, I guess.
I would second, yeah.
Second, second.
Okay.
And then roll call for the two of you.
Yeah, so.
Stalker, aye.
And Farrell, aye.
Okay. So while we're thinking if anyone else wants to make a motion, again, I, I, this process is always a little awkward, but I know that there's always opportunities to serve, uh, whether it be on the school committee, school council, PTO, um, I know, looking at some of your, letters that you sent, that some of you are already participating and, and serving in other ways within our town, and, and that's wonderful. Okay, are there any other motions? Alright, it looks like Julie, you will be the next, uh, person on the school committee appointed, you'll need to be sworn in. Okay, you're more than welcome, and in all of you are more than welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting. I appreciate, uh, everyone for participating, the select board for meeting with us today, um, and for all of the people who applied for this position, I do really appreciate it, as well as your patience, uh, with me through this process, I, really was striving to make sure that the process was, um, fair, inclusive, uh, spread out to the whole community, and an equitable process, so I thank you all.
And Dan, can I just say, I, I just want a second, um, you know, it, it was so thrilling to see this many people, and this many qualified people, um, interested in the, in the school committee, so, um, your turn will come, and we have lots of other, um, town committees, which, uh, we could certainly use, um, the expertise and wisdom of, um, the candidates who put their names forth tonight, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I second that, and Rita, I think we probably have to have a movement, a, a motion to adjourn, is that correct?
We do.
I just wanted to let Julie know, to get sworn in, the town clerk's hours are from ten to one, and three to five, um, Monday through Friday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So do I hear a motion to adjourn the select board meeting?
So moved.
And I will second, all those in favor?
Stalker, aye.
Farrell, aye, good night, everybody, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Becky. So, um, the next item on the agenda is reorganization of the committee, so I will turn it over to Jennifer.
Here, here's my one moment in the sun as a pretend school committee member, so, um, we will reorganize the Shootsberry School Committee this evening. The first position that is on the agenda is the position of chair. Once we have nominated and elected a chair, I will turn the meeting over to the chair. So I am looking for a nominee, a motion, and a second for chair.
And just so everyone knows, what we generally try to do, at least here in Shootsberry, is to see or ask if anyone has an interest, because it's always nice, if you know that someone is interested in that position, it makes the process a little bit less awkward. If nobody is interested, I'm more than willing to do it for one more year, but it would be wonderful for perhaps next year, uh, people to be considering, uh, moving into that role, I know Lauren has done it a bit. So I am willing to serve one more year, if there are, if there is anyone that's interested, by all means.
Thanks, Dan, I'm gonna jump on that, and move to nominate Dan as chair, chair of the school committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, and we would need a roll call vote, right, Jennifer?
Yep. Yes, I was, yes, roll call vote, I muted myself in my one moment to shine, so.
Thomas Pequen, aye.
Rose, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
And Hayes, aye, thank you all very much, I appreciate it, and, uh, the next position, and, uh, again, Jennifer, if you can help me out, is it the vice chair?
This, yeah, it does, it says secretary, but we've called it vice chair, and that's, um, the person who assumes the responsibilities in your absence.
Right. Is there anyone who would like to take that position? How about you, Bethany?
Uh, if you're willing to assist and let me know what I need to do, um, I think just figuring out what exactly the role is, um, throughout would be helpful, so.
We're open, we're transparent, and we would be, both myself and Lauren would be more than happy to, to assist you in learning the ropes.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Alright.
Anyone else interested? Alright, do we have a nomination?
I move to nominate Bethany Rose for vice chair.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call votes.
Thomas Pequen, aye.
Hayes, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Bethany, you wanna vote for yourself?
Sure, Rose, aye.
Okay. And Jennifer, what else is on there? I don't have that, I left it at my house.
I won't unmute myself, I'll be the, um, assistant, the co-host. Uh, next is Union 28 representative. One of the elected representatives to this position will, should also serve on the budget and personnel when we get down there, so, um, typically, we vote in three members and two as alternates in case, so we can always have a quorum.
And by default, I believe I'm one of them, correct?
Correct, the Chair is one of them.
We would need two other people who are interested in serving on Union 28.
I'm happy to continue serving on Union 28.
And, and just for those of you who don't know, we don't meet every month at the Joint Supervisory Level. Typically, it's four to five times a year, so it's not an every month commitment.
If I'm allowed to be willing.
You volunteered? Excellent. So obviously, it'll take place after you're sworn in. But let's, do we have a motion?
What are we, are we moving to nominate me? Because if we are, maybe somebody else.
Well, we can, we can do both, if you'd like.
All right, then let's, let's, I move to accept myself and Julie as members of the Union 28 Committee or Representatives.
I'll second.
All right, roll call vote.
Rose, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Hayes, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Excellent. And Julie, you can vote for yourself today, but soon. All right. We have the Amherst Regional Reps.
Budget and Personnel.
Budget and Personnel, okay.
Yes.
Lauren, you've been on that, correct?
Yeah, I'm willing to do, to continue, if there'll be others to do it.
Anyone else interested? And I will tell you, regardless of whether you're a member of a committee, everyone is always welcome to attend the meetings, go learn. It's a really good way of sort of understanding not only the school, but the union itself and other schools, so. All right, Lauren expressed an interest. Is there a motion?
I move to nominate Lauren to the Budget and Personnel Committee.
A second. Steve, you want to second that?
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote. Hayes, aye.
Rose, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Now Regional Middle School, High School Representative.
Steve, you have been serving in that capacity.
I, really? I, I didn't know. I wasn't aware of that. Yeah, if, if no one else wants to, I will continue with that.
Okay, anyone else interested? That does meet, what, twice a month?
Yeah, at least.
Anyone else interested? I nominate Steve to be our Amherst Rep.
Bethany, you want to second that?
I second.
Excellent. And roll call vote. Hayes, aye.
Rose, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Excellent.
And next is Policy. We need two members to serve on the Policy Committee. And that meets a half an hour prior to our regular School Committee meeting.
So Julie, I hate to put you on the spot, but I do think especially having children in the school gives us a good connection. If you'd like to serve on that, I think it would be wonderful.
Sure, I'm willing.
You'd be willing? Excellent. Is there anyone else interested?
I can do that.
Awesome. That's what I was hoping for. So we have a slate of candidates interested. Do we have a motion?
I move to accept Bethany and Julie as our Policy Representatives.
I'll second that.
Okay, Hayes, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Got you both. Excellent.
Capital Planning? And that's one person?
I'll continue that one.
Lauren?
I nominate Steve for Capital Planning. Thanks, Steve.
I second.
Hayes, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Rose, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Excellent.
And last is CES Representative.
Okay, so CES Julie stands for the Collaborative Educational Services. I would be interested in serving. I, Chair, we had just hired a new Executive Director, and I've been working very closely with him, so at least for this year, I'd also like to serve in that capacity to get Todd Goss to sort of, the support that he needs and understanding of how the Collaborative Board works, so.
I nominate Dan for CES Representative.
I'll second that, since I do it at the region.
Okay, so thank you very much. I appreciate that. Hayes, aye.
Rose, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
All right, Jennifer.
Is the Buildings Committee still on there, or is that one not?
It isn't listed, Stephen, but, you know, I defer to Dan on that if we want to add a position.
Isn't that sort of the Capital Planning?
No, they're two, they're two totally separate boards, but I was, I was placed on that as a School Committee member.
I think I would be happy to nominate that you serve in that capacity as well, and continue. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Hayes, aye.
Rose, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Thank you. Thanks for.
I wrote you down, Stephen. You're all set.
Excellent. All right, so thank you all for a smooth reorganization. I do appreciate Jennifer, the spotlight as a School Committee member was brief, but it was wonderful, so thank you. Public hearings. Oh, Trevor, you have your hand raised?
Yes, sorry to interrupt. Could I just get the, the position that Steve was nominated for, that last?
Buildings Committee.
Buildings Committee, thank you.
Thank you. Lauren, if you can keep an eye out for anything too, if I miss it, okay, for hands or whatever, appreciate that. On, on the screen that I'm on, it's like, it's narrow, it's anyhow. Do we have any public hearings?
You can switch this, because we'll screen.
I'm not touching it. No public hearings, okay? So reviewing the agenda.
That's where it comes. You can just go like this.
Oh.
No, no. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
Dan, someone has their hand up.
Okay. Mary Lou.
Hi, I'm curious, what is a public hearing, Dan?
Public hearing is an opportunity for someone to provide input into something that is on the agenda. That's generally how it works.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And just so you know, for future reference, generally on the agenda on the back is sort of how public hearings work. There's information on there, so.
Thank you. And for the attendance keeper, I'm in here twice because I'm on a better view, my desktop. So I'm in here as Mary Lou Conkash, SHC, which is Shrewsbury Historical Commission, of which I have a seat. And then you may see me as Mary Lou Farah, I put in parentheses, because that's how my email comes up. So just to clarify to the attendance keeper, there's not two of us. Thank you.
Thank you. So in reviewing the perpetual calendar and agenda, most everything is covered. I believe I sent out a a copy of a letter that I was sending into the Our Town Newsletter for everybody's review. The deadline for that was tomorrow, so I did send that in. Hopefully, you know, it's, although the letter generally comes from the Chair, I always try to seek input and advice, so I thought it was an important letter to write at this time. With COVID, we are all dealing with a lot of turmoil and frustration and ambiguity and all of that. So I just wanted to sort of write a letter that showed that we really do care, and we we collect a lot of data and information to inform the decisions that we make, and we understand that most of the time, the decisions that we make, probably half the people are not happy with, and the other half are. But we try our best, and when people have questions, I've expressed that we're more than happy to answer questions. Questions are wonderful, they're great, it's how we learn. If people can ask questions in a way that shows kindness and compassion, empathy, it's much appreciated. So that's what that letter is about. Otherwise, I think we'll be working on Superintendent Goals and School Goals. Soon will be the, if you haven't started already, I think the, the elections for School Council and all of that, so. We're right on target, so thank you all. Are there any warrants and gifts?
I have a pile of warrants, but I can't find them, I can't find the file, so I'm going to have to send it to Trevor, and then I'll go through the entire list at our next meeting.
Um, Steve, I actually have those. Bruce sends those to me ahead of time, so.
Would you, would you like me to read them off, Dan?
I think as long as we acknowledge that the warrants and gifts have been acknowledged and have been submitted to Trevor, and they'll be in the public record, I think that will be enough. If we want to take a motion that we recognize that, that would be great, that the the motion would be to recognize that warrants have been sent to Trevor and will be in the public record.
I, yes, so thanks, Steve.
And the second?
I'll second.
All right, and we'll do a roll call vote. Hayes, aye.
Rose, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
And the second?
I second.
Okay, Hayes, aye.
Rose, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Thank you. So a couple items on the agenda. Unfinished business, one of the items was protocols. Julie, especially being a new person, I'd just like to explain a little bit about how protocols work. You'll be taking a training probably at some point with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. We'll let you know when those trainings are. Even if it's for a one-year position, it's good information to have and understand how things work. So protocols, I wanted to just mention that because as a School Committee member, we have sort of three primary roles. The role would be the Superintendent includes hiring, monitoring, contract negotiations with the Superintendent, so the Superintendent is one part of what we do. The second piece is budget. So we oversee the budget, we craft the budget, we reflect on the budget, and then policies. So policies are obviously things that we implement into the school. Policies have a process of approval. We have a subcommittee that looks at policies in advance, working with administration to bring those policies forward, so and then we vote on those policies. So those are the three main things that School Committee members do. However, there are other things that come up, and sometimes parents will, or, or members of the community will reach out to us with questions. And our role is really to listen. It's always important to listen to people. This is why we're elected to this position. We want to make sure that we're empathetic, that we can hear what they have to say. But the important role that we play is to make sure that we direct people to where they can get their problem resolved. So if the problem is something in a classroom, we may direct them to the teacher. If it's with a teacher, it's to the principal. If it's more than that, it's to the Superintendent. We don't do a lot with operations within a school, so there are channels of communication, chain of command, and protocols. And that's sort of the direction that that would take. So it's important to, you know, have an understanding of how things work and how we can direct people who will best be able to help them. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay. Capital projects, I know there were sort of two listed here, but there's sort of three big ones. So the one that's not listed is, can we get an update on the roof?
Sure. So we'll go in the order that they're on. Doors for the conference room is ordered. It's due to be delivered sometime in October, and Bob Groves is working to get some quotes on installation, and we should be doing that sometime later on this fall, so. The ventilation system, Becky is working on getting three quotes for engineer, and then we'll be getting the design process of that. Requires some engineering design, it's bids out for that, so. And the roof, they installed the interior drainage on that. We decided to put drainage in the building instead of the gutter system on the outside. And they're hoping to do the roof Christmas week. They had issues getting some of the supplies, the insulation was, was an issue, so that's where we're at. It's, it hasn't gone away, it's just they couldn't get the supplies they needed to do it, and it's got held up this summer, so. You know, the shooting for this winter, we'll see how that goes, but it may not be until spring or after next summer, so.
And I just want to piggyback on that, just because in case people get some emails, there have been some community members that have been very upset at some of the landscaping in the front of the building because over the, when they were doing the internal piping off of the roof, they had to dig out, like treat big, like trees and rock garden and other things that were in the front of the school, and they only recently just finished it, and so it's looking a little not beautiful at the moment, and there, there have been several people who have expressed concern to me about that. So I just want to say that is because of the work they did in the, on the school building, and then as soon as we feel like we're not going to waste money because it's going to get ruined again when the roof happens, we'll, we'll definitely be replacing some stuff there.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, and I would just want to piggyback on that, that obviously the priority is to make sure that we keep the water out of the school. So what we need to do with that is the priority, but being cognizant of aesthetics is always nice, so.
Yeah, that's, that's actually part of the project, is returning it back to somewhere there near the original condition, so.
So a couple questions. Do, did we get any headway or, or make any the money from the state? Is that coming through? Do we know that yet?
I have not heard anything from the MSBA. I don't know if anybody else has. That usually goes to the town, but I think Becky would have said something. They're running way behind schedule with their timelines this year, so. I'm not surprised that we haven't heard anything.
The MSBA, isn't that just for the, where did, the town's paying for the gym roof, and the MSBA is for the rest of the roof?
Correct, and, and we also put in for boiler replacement tools, so. But we haven't heard any, I haven't heard anything, so.
And the ventilation, the ventilation system, I know that we were planning And the ventilation, the ventilation system, I know that we were planning on doing some work to the ventilation system, but uh the. COVID relief money, whatever they're using now, uh is that money accessible for some of that or?
It's possible. I think I think we need to determine what we're doing and and we can see if we can access it.
But also, I I just wanna also say publicly at a meeting where there's people here that don't often come to these and might be confused. Our ventilation system is very strong and good. We're not talking about like bad air or anything. We're talking about um redoing it. And so we're we're on an electronic electronic system that is way more up to date and so that we can adjust it and and workers and the custodians can adjust it on a better level. Instead of like an old fashioned level, but our actual. Flow of air and air quality is is good, we're not, so we're not replacing it for that.
Jackie, thank you so much for um, you know, mentioning that. I I I should have said that some of what we're looking at is really to create efficiencies in the system. So that it takes less energy to provide the ventilation within the school, so. Sorry.
I think I think there's opportunity through our green communities. And the green community's fun also, so.
Right.
We haven't got to that point yet, but once we get some idea what we're looking at, I think we'll um start looking for other sources of revenue for that.
Right.
I believe Becky said yesterday at the buildings committee that she's just waiting on the third engineer. Their bid to do it and then we will pick one and then we'll really find out what we need.
Are working, yep.
And lastly, which is not on the agenda, I did receive an email from Becky, I believe it was yesterday. It was forwarded or sent to all of the school committee members as well, um so Julie, sorry, you didn't get it. But basically, it is a letter outlining that we want to begin the process of looking at the regional assessment. Regional assessment is the amount that each town pays towards the budget at the Amherst Regional School System. And the letter is basically explaining. That we want to start the process early to help a lot of the newer members get educated on. Where the process is, where it sort of the process that it is taken to get us to where we are. So that we can help people better understand how we move forward. So that letter was sent to us and I believe they are asking for all of us to sign the letter and uh. I don't know how we all sign the letter, but I think we can do it electronically if you um agree with the letter. I think the the letter is pretty um just more informative as far as a process. Yes, Lauren?
For people who are for Bethany and Julie, um the the conversation has been going on for many years. Um and what we found particularly at our our last um. Meeting with all the town with the four towns was that people who are not familiar with the conversations that have been going on for a long time. It sort of resets the conversation, so um shoots very is hoping to. Frontload so that that doesn't happen. That would you that did I did I summarize that correctly? Please feel free to add.
And Lauren, uh could you please send that to Trevor so he can put that into the record, the actual letter itself?
Sure.
I would do it myself, but I'm discombobulated here.
Okay.
Steve?
Suzie, do you have anything you wanna add to this?
Um. The the feeling right now is that the Amherst Regional School um chose not to talk about it this summer. Or not begin an education process, but that's part of why the letter was prompted and then I do know that the budget. Uh Regional Budget Committee, I think it did meet and I don't know if they had an upshot. See, Steve, we were at a, I don't know what meeting you and I intersected on, but I believe there's some um discussion in the Amherst region, is that right?
That's correct. The the big stumbling block isn't the Amherst School Committee, the Regional School Committee, it's the Town Council. They have decided that they are the boss, they carry the big hammer. And I made the suggestion, because I I left this regional school committee meeting to join the FinCom while we discussed this letter. And then I went back and the regional school committee was discussing this exact thing. And I made the suggestion now the regional school committee should make its own budget of what it really needs. And show that to the town council before they come up with theirs and I got laughed laughed right off my screen. Nobody nobody wanted to even try that, so everyone is afraid of the Amherst Town Council, so whatever they say is just gonna go.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons we wanted education, because the town council was made of thirteen people really new to the process. And we wanted them to hear what how the components of the agreement and how we got here and think about what FY twenty-three will look like.
Okay. Anything else there to add? All right, so um feel free to review the letter and Lauren, maybe we can send that to Julie as well. But you shouldn't sign it until you're appointed, but you're not in there, so we'll see how it goes.
I sent it to Trevor already and I'll and I will also send it to you.
Thank you.
The Regional School Committee, that you know, I they are all they're in their same boat and feeling the exact same way that we are.
And what is that?
That all the points on this letter are the exactly how they're feeling too.
Okay. All right, so thank you all. We'll move on to new business. Masks was the first part of that.
Yeah, um I asked for this to be uh put on the agenda. Um and it's because I've been engaging in a lot of dialogue with um a whole lot of families around masks. And of course, you're not, I'm not gonna be here advocating for no masks, believe me. So um I definitely, I I don't really wanna even talk about in masks in school because that's not nonnegotiable. But I wanna talk about the possibility of mandating masks outside during recess and um. And you know, that is not something the state is mandating. It is, it is a practice that there that some surrounding districts are starting to implement. And um. There's a lot of strong feelings in the community around masks and I just wanna acknowledge that as well. I have been, it's been a steady stream of correspondence with me and many, many communities uh members for the for the last three weeks. And so I just wanna be, you know, very careful in saying that I I hear everyone's opinions on masks. I totally understand where people are coming from. We all know that we're following mandates for inside masking. But I did wanna bring up to the committee and maybe here are some thoughts that the committee have around um masks outside at recess. Particularly for the younger grades where um the distancing is a little bit harder to always enforce. Um of course, they're being supervised at all times, there's reminders of at all times, but they are being allowed to play freely on the playground. And uh you know, I there are many, there are many families who would feel more comfortable with some of their students masked outside. So um I just wanted to bring it up to the committee I for engendered to, we both wanted to after um getting a lot of feedback. And just maybe hear the thoughts um of the committee members and possibly do a vote or or uh or maybe think about. Finding more information and coming back at the next meeting for a vote.
I I think it's important because you may have gotten emails, you may not have, and Jackie and I really wanna be transparent about the feedback we're getting. And and just for clarity's sake, we are following all of the state mandates. The state just does not mandate outdoor masks. In Union twenty-eight schools, currently Chutesbury, Swift River and Irving do not wear masks outside. They are following DESI and DPH guidance, the Department of Public Health. And the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recommendations. And Leverett is um mandating masks for outdoors at this time. So I'll turn it back over to the committee, but that's the reason that this is on the agenda under new business.
Yeah, so I think it's an opportunity for first us as school committee members to comment or ask questions. I I guess I'll I'll begin and you all can um, you know, think about what it is that you'd like to say. I will take a couple of comments from people in just a few minutes. So I think Jackie, my first question is, um can you tell me a little bit about um mask breaks?
Yeah, um. They they happen, um you know, I think I say this a lot, but there are many benefits of having a small school and um. This is one of them, so we have ample staff and we have lots of beautiful outside space. And we have teachers who are really committed to using that outside space and so um mask breaks. And this is a very true statement, can happen for any student at any time if they're feeling like that needs to happen. Many of our classrooms have exterior doors which have been very well utilized in the past year. And so mask breaks can even happen for three minutes outside, popping right outside the classroom and coming back in. The little kids, the very little kids, the preschooler and kindergarten students, maybe some first grade, they spend a lot of time outdoors in general so that kids can have some mask breaks. But I think, you know, anybody with a kid in the school here can tell you, there's there's a lot of time for the kids to be able to have mask breaks outside. That that should not be a concern for anybody. And also, you know, we're super receptive for family feedback saying that I need my student to have scheduled mask breaks outside at specific times. We can obviously accommodate that um and and that and we are happy to do so to make sure people are feeling comfortable.
Thank you. Any school committee member have a comment or? Question? All right, let me go to um, I'm sorry, is that Natty?
Natalia, um thank you, um so um thank you for the opportunity to um comment. I have a second grader, Oliver, um he was remote all of the half of the kindergarten all of last year. I'm an epidemiologist, I have a doctoral degree. I did COVID nineteen surveillance all of the past um year for the National Football League. So I have a lot of opinions. I think masks are important. I think policies, we have seen that policies are behind science always. And the lag is really, really, really long, so I think masks will be mandated. Outdoors as well, and I don't think that it's worth waiting for the policies to be updated. I think there is evidence there that transmission happens outdoors and kids actually. Kids don't have problems wearing masks. I think a lot of it comes from parents. The issues a lot of times are political. We wanna respect that, but we also wanna put the health of the community first. And certainly, there are opportunities for mask breaks. Um it is very important. It's just one of those things that are such an such a low, low hanging fruit that could make a huge difference. At the NFL, we've seen transmission happen, you know, on the field under fifteen minutes. Over six feet, um it doesn't, it doesn't take that much. I think it would be such an important um step, the masks. To mandate masks outside.
Okay, thank you, and then we'll go to Mary Lou Conca and then Robert Levine. Mary Lou?
Okay, hi, um I I wanna back up a bit. My hand was up before you closed the last um. Agenda item and you were talking about the email in regard to the money that um Chutesbury gives to the regional. School district and I wondered, can the public see that email, Dan?
Yep, it'll be in the minute, so it'll be accessible to anyone and everyone.
In the minutes following this meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so did you, you did, Robert, did you wanna go next then?
Sure, uh thank you for the opportunity and not to, um no mean to pile on, uh but I just wanted to voice alignment what uh with, was it uh not nothing? Who just spoke as well, so um so I too have been very much involved with COVID and the care of patients and contact tracing with COVID. And um I just wanna reiterate that the data probably um is coming to particularly around Delta and new variants. For outside transmission and in fact, data of uh around the Provincetown outbreak. Uh showed up to a thirty percent transmission likely to happen in vaccinated individuals that were outdoors, so. So advocating for the health of our child, the children, uh as well as our community. I I I would align with the the recommendation and uh the voices that are um asking for outdoor sort of masks. It doesn't deviate from CDC recommendations, I just for those who aren't up to date with those as well. Because CDC does recommend outdoor masking in crowded areas in which social distancing is difficult. And we all know our kids um only listen so much to their wings out, um so there are instances, I'm sure, for enjoyment, even in the woods. Where those distancing is not happening and masks just add an added layer um of of protection that I think is easily attainable and would be much appreciated, so.
Thank you, and Melissa?
Um yeah, I uh basically want to um. I'm not a an epidemiologist or don't work in the hospital, but I'm a concerned parent and sometimes employee of the school and. Involved here and um, you know, just knowing um what's going on in other states. And again, the data that maybe hasn't been published yet, but clearly is coming. I would rather do something now than have a really horrible incident happen in our school, which would be some, you know. Child or family member getting sick or dying, which would be horrendous, so I would like to stop that from happening.
Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands up. Um are there any other comments from committee members? I mean, my personal feeling is, you know, it this is a very difficult um. Uh uh there's conflicting information, conflicting, I think, I don't know if I'd call it evidence. But I think. You know, if we approach it where we try to be again compassionate and I understand that. You you know, it doesn't seem like it can hurt. I think it's uh wonderful that you're making sure that everybody, student has opportunities to uh have a mask break. I think it's wonderful that you're listening to parents who might have specific um concerns about their child and and having it scheduled mask breaks. So I I would support the decision for you to do what you think is really in the best interests of the students and the staff and the people who are at school. Not to mention whatever. However, that impacts other people outside of the school, family members and such, so.
I also just um wanna publicly state two more things. Um the first thing is that. I have not had one problem of a student wearing a mask. Not one problem. Last year, we had to do a few mask plans with kids, but this year we have not had one instance where a child was refusing or did not. Want to wear a mask, um so I just wanted to publicly state that, or at least it was not. So I just wanted to publicly state that, or at least it was not told to me, which usually things come to me. And then the second thing is, is that I really do think our younger grade teachers in particular, but our staff in general would feel supported with an outside mask agreement.
So are you looking for us to make some sort of a motion this evening to support?
I certainly think the staff would feel very supported if that was done.
Okay. So, Trevor, I'll try to be careful and concise. But I would say the school committee supports the decision to implement masks outdoors as well as indoors to protect students, staff, teachers and community members. So you have a draft there before there's a second. Is there anything Lauren or Bethany or Steve that you would like to put in there? Or change? I think the point is to try to, you know, show support, but I also think that Jackie, you know, conditions continue to change in this. And you have been adapting along the way. And I think that you've made really good decisions. So, you know, moving forward, we don't know what tomorrow brings, but, you know, obviously continuing on the path that you have of, of just monitoring the situation, staying abreast and and we'll see how things move forward is important to just acknowledge. Okay, if there's nothing to add or, okay, Stephen?
I'm just curious, is there any adaptability in that, that, or is that just gonna, you know, would that end up running through the entire school year? Or things did change for the spring? You know, is, is there a way just to stop the outside masks? Or is that something that will just run through the entire school year?
Well, I, I think I'm usually pretty transparent around when things are changing in the school. And of course, if, if, if we, if there's data to prove that that doesn't need to happen anymore, or cases are slowing, or variants aren't changing and shifting, or that, or the vaccine and kids is like a miracle, or like, I don't know, if something happens that can change it, of course. Of course, I'd rather not have to mandate it, but at this, at this time, it, it feels like it might be something, especially going into the winter months that could be helpful.
So Jackie, I think to Steve's point, so we don't have to reconvene a meeting. Could we add a word like as is somewhere? And maybe Jennifer, do you have a point you'd want to make? And then I'll come back to you Natalia.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I think why Jackie and I wanted to have it on the agenda besides being as transparent as possible is all of last year, we really partnered with the school committee in reopening our school, in providing hybrid education, in being able to be remote when we needed to. And this, I think, goes hand in hand with that. If we wanted to add to the motion, if the landscape of COVID changes, we will adapt as needed. And I think that would help us either way in case we needed to be more strict or less strict.
All right, so let's come back to Trevor to the motion. That has been being formulated and not seconded yet. Can you add that piece and perhaps read it back?
And move to state that Schutzbury School Committee supports the decision to implement masks outdoors as well as indoors in order to protect students, staff, teachers and community members, adapting to the pandemic landscape as needed.
Jackie, you happy with that? Okay. So I do see a hand up again. Natalia?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to add that this summer we did see rates going way down. Massachusetts Franklin County went into the low risk group and we saw, you know, cases only being one per hundred thousand. And I think that that is what we want to see. And at that point, perhaps that decision could be revisited for masking outdoors and indoors. But, you know, we saw this great time where we were in the green zone of low risk. And, and let's just do a little bit more to, to move back into that green, green zone where we can feel safe.
Great. So I believe that this motion with the added piece that Jennifer put in there will give you that flexibility, Jackie, to lift anything that perhaps could be lifted at some future date. And in the meantime, we'll do what we think is best to try to protect all kids and everybody. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call vote. Hayes, I?
Rose, I.
Thomas, pick one, I.
Sullivan, I.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I were allowed to vote, that would be an I for me.
Thank you. School choice money. So I put this on the agenda because I had been contacted. Natalia, your hand is up. That's done, right? Okay. I had been contacted. It sounds like there's some percolation about school choice funds and how they're used in other communities, how they impact the budget. We have touched upon this in the past. We brought it up at town meeting. So I'm bringing it up tonight so that we can just begin a discussion on sort of plans or thoughts or direction that we want to go in relation to school choice funds. We received some information from, I think it was Susie Mosher, I think you sent it to us, you and Bob Groves did some research on this. It does look like, and Bruce, you're probably familiar, different school districts handle the funds in different ways. So Lauren, you have your hand up.
Uh, yeah, I just, I want, it's really important in my mind that we continue to reinforce the idea that school choice funds are not supposed to like offset the budget. They're not, you're not supposed to take school choice funds to reduce the budget. And not only does it say that in the school choice, in the, the legislation, but also it's just not a good idea to do because the school choice funds fluctuate and our budget can't, can't sort of manage that degree of fluctuation. But I also just want to add that, that Jackie is always really forthcoming with what she would like to do with the funds and, and brings it to us. And we, we consistently have that communication.
Right. I think the question comes like, so how much money do we accumulate in that revolving fund? You know, and do we have a limit? And then that money is used in some capacity? So Jackie?
Yeah, I'm glad we're starting this conversation now. I think, you know, Dan, over the years, we have, it's kind of been a conundrum for our school committee. And, and it's because, you know, when I first came here, there was no school choice. This is my eighth year. There was no school choice students are, the population was higher and the population has gradually dipped and dipped and dipped. And it really came about when, actually there's someone here whose child was in this cohort. There was a really tiny, tiny cohort of kindergarteners. And it, it, there were like five kindergarteners or something. I just want everyone to kind of hear how this, how it started. And so we decided to try to give to be, because we saw the population dip and because we know that five students in a class certainly is not a social, like, it's socially not what you would want for your student. You want a little bit more diversity. That we would attempt to try it, starting in that class, slowly and surely adding on. And I did kind of my own procedures with the school council where we said, you know, we're not going to really take any new students over third grade because we want them to, to grow with us in the school and the families to be a big part of the school community. And slowly, and then we also got teachers, students to be classified as school choice. And so over time, we went from, you know, four school choice students to like twenty five. So, I mean, we've, it's really like, it has grown over the past few years. And because it was an experiment at first, really, I mean, you could kind of call it that. We weren't really, we weren't really sure like how, it wasn't part of what we did. And it, it wasn't part of our budget. And we weren't really even sure what it was going to be like or, or any, or if the population was going to grow and we were going to have to stop it. So it has been a successful piece in terms of our school community and having families really a part of our school community and students really a lovely part of our classrooms. That part's been really great. And as a bonus, yes, of course, we have this, we have a lot of money. We have a lot of money right now. And so we don't, we never knew exactly like what we wanted to do with it. So I, we have been doing some brainstorming. And I kind of want to talk to you about what, what in terms of operating on the school level, it would be super helpful for. So one of the things that I want the committee to think about and with this money are, are, is to help support and fund either positions or things that are not, would not be a constant in a small school. And what I mean by that is this year I had to hire a part-time ESL teacher, English as a Second Language teacher, because we had two students come that needed an ESL teacher. That is not always something that Schutzbury has to have because we only, very infrequently do we have students needing ESL services. And so my, what I would want to do is because this is a position that is just a temporary position, it makes sense that we would use our school choice money to fund this position that is needed that would otherwise have to be either brought to the town to get the money, or we would have to, I don't know, do a lot of cutting to be able to get the position. And so it would be really valuable, really meaningful. We wouldn't have to go to the town and it would actually be impacting the school and the kids in it at that time. That's like one example. Another example is we have currently a, a one-year interventionist that's being funded a little bit by some COVID money. But I also would want to be able to supplement the other part of that money with school choice funds, which is, again, this is not, and we already have a reading specialist. This is just an additional support to kind of get us back to the recovery, the recovery education support for students because of the last eighteen or nineteen months. So that would again, not be a temporary position that we would have to budget into the budget or try to figure out the money, but that we have the money to support the kids already. And it, and it wouldn't impact us in the long run about not incorporating it into our budget, no matter how the school choice and our population fluctuated.
And Jackie, I think you bring up a good point, although what, it wasn't directly stated, but it was implied that all of those positions you talked about are not positions we're going to have to keep in our budget every year. And so when we began to talk about school choice, right, we talked about those one-off times or special opportunities or things that were needed that were not going to be recurrent in the budget. And so I, I just think that's an important point to make when we think about the school choice funds.
Lauren? Your hand is up.
Sorry, I just didn't take it down.
Okay. So Jackie, if there's twenty students school choice, it's a hundred thousand dollars. Right? And you may have two positions that you're using. You're not going to use the hundred thousand dollars for those two positions.
Well, yeah, you probably would when all is said and done.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's when you have someone, you're hiring someone on a point six that has their masters and then you also need to incorporate, you know, other pieces into it. It's at least going to be, Dan, you, you do this. You always tell the salaries, like, it's at least going to be like forty, at least per person, probably more thousand.
Yeah, I, I would ballpark it at probably forty, forty-five thousand dollars.
Each?
Mm-hmm, each, yes.
Okay.
And it depends if they're like, like our ESL person is a point six, so it's even, it's a little more than a point five. And then benefits get incorporated in that too.
Okay. Hey, Susie, you had your hand up, right?
Yep. Um, so you're talking about this for this current fiscal year, FY twenty-two, right? Okay, just checking.
Okay, Bruce?
So presently, we have about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, somewhere thereabouts, saved, and we're getting about ten thousand dollars a month this year so far. So, you know, the good thing is we're probably going to break even this year with what we spend and what we're getting in. But my experience with other, some of the other communities that we use it to fund the budget is a few years ago Leverett amount dipped significantly and we, we didn't have the resources. You know, what, what we usually do is spend what we have in the bank, basically, or budget what we have in the bank. And we didn't have the resources to continue funding at a level that we were. And, you know, we're asking the town for another fifty thousand dollars. It's, it's in our budget that that causes, caused a significant increase in our, in our request from the town. And I think in, in Schutzbury, that's something we really want to avoid. So that's why, like Jackie said, this year we needed some extra staffing that we didn't budget for and would have been we, the only way we could have done this is either reduced everything else we spend or go to the town. This way, we don't have to go to the town. But we are able to do some really good things for the kids. So, you know, that's, that's where that money comes in real handy. And having a, a little bit of a, a savings account helps the town and the district significantly in, in times of need. So that's just my thoughts. It helps us, if we're not using it to fund the budget, it really helps us financially to kind of keep things on a more steady, even progression as far as our budget goes.
And Bruce, don't you also think that it's super helpful, helpful to have, if in the process of the year, we have like kind of incredible special education costs that might pop up that we wouldn't necessarily have within the budget, for example, to send one student on, I mean, we couldn't even get a van right now because there's no drivers or vans. But if we could, to have one kid on a van for a year is like sixty thousand dollars, a seventy, it's like an incredible amount to the town. So like, it's, it, it also is when you have, when you're your own district and you're a tiny one that these types of expenses can pop up all, all the time. And it's, it feels good to be able to take care of it with actual, with money that's going towards the kids and not have to go to the town for things like that too. But that's just something in my mind.
Yeah, it's good to have a cushion to buffer those kinds of things.
Okay, Lauren, is your hand up now?
Yes, thanks. I just, I think that those kinds of things like the special education costs and the, the one-off costs happen frequently. So I think it's, it's totally reasonable for people to question where these, what's happening with these large amounts of money and that it, you know, that shouldn't just be sitting in an account. You know, we don't, it should, we shouldn't just be sitting on money, but I really, that's, I, I, that doesn't, we don't see a lot of money sitting around at Schutzbury Elementary School. So I would argue that the way that this is being handled is a great way to do it. That there, the money is there for the, we had, what, two years ago, the, a, a huge transportation expense and these things come up and we don't always know. And so I think it's better for us to, to use the money for those kinds of things that do come up consistently.
So what I would recommend perhaps is Bruce, Jackie is outline a plan or, or how that would work. The reason is, you know, you're mentioning special ed costs. Well, I don't know how that works because I know with those I know uh, with those expenses, there's circuit breaker and then there's uh. You know, other ways that um, money is, you know, comes back for. And, and if that money is used out of school choice funds, does that mean you couldn't apply for circuit breaker? And I'm not asking that as a question, I'm making that as a general statement that I don't know how that all works.
Yeah, circuit breaker is really good point, Dan, and I think the town wants to know how that works because. It's actually a lot trickier to get money from circuit breaker than anyone thinks, so I think that that's.
So in our school choice sort of overview, those could be some of the pieces. Um, that we could put in there.
Right, ultimately, I want to work with our finance committee. I want it to be an effort where they understand how we're going to use that money in an efficient and an effective way. Because I think the questions that are, are, that are arising are, well, what are you gonna do with that money? So I think if we, we outline how we're going to use it, we monitor it, we uh. Work with them as well. I mean, we have a wonderful relationship with them. And I, I wanna make sure that we do what's best for our students and our school. I also recognize that within the town, you know, funding is, is tight and, you know. And, and how can we work with the finance committee to make sure that they know? We're not going to use this money sort of in a frivolous way. We're gonna use it in an effective way. Um, so I think outlining a plan and uh, we can work with the finance committee to see how do they feel about that. Since what could happen is. That, even though we don't wanna use school choice funds to support our budget. If we come up with a budget and they know we have a large amount of funds in school choice, that they don't say. Well, we don't support your budget, we think it should be fifty thousand dollars less. Because that is what happens in Leverett. So.
That is definitely what happens in Leverett.
Right, so if we can come up with a way to explain how efficiently we can use the money. Uh, and work with the finance committee so that, you know, their understanding of our intentions. That we wanna be efficient and effective and work with the town in a supportive way. Okay, so we don't need to do that tonight, but I wanted to make sure that we had this discussion, so we were all on the same page. Um, when I had gotten phone calls, I was sort of a little surprised. I thought, oh, people are calling me about school choice funds. And I wanted to make sure we had the transparency of having a discussion as a school committee. So we're all on the same page, knowing that we are having conversations about school choice funds, okay? All right.
Up, I think Suzie has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just wanna, so, and I would like to suggest that it get done. As um, before the budget gets proposed in um, for FY twenty-three. Which usually that proposal comes out sometime late November, early Dec- uh, December. Just so that it's a piece of the understanding, uh, uh, your plan would be, and your policy would be the way it's understood.
We, we can start working on that document soon.
Yeah, be bullets or whatever, I mean, not long.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a, an issue because we already have all of our ideas, so.
Awesome.
Great.
All right. Uh, so we have homeschool applications. I believe there were six that were sent to us and then an additional one that came later, which was number seven.
That is correct. There were a lot, there were some late ones. There were some late decisions. Yeah.
Okay, so um.
So I have looked them over. I have um, approved them all. And I am bringing them forward to the school committee for final approval.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the seven homeschool applications as presented by Jennifer? And I know that Jennifer um, always extends to the families, uh, as does Jackie, the specials. And the ability to access different parts of the school, so. Motion to approve?
I move to approve the homeschooling applications.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other questions? I will have a question, but it's sort of separate, so I won't do it here, but um, all those in favors, roll call, haze eye?
Rose, I.
Thomas, pick an eye?
All of an eye.
Okay, great, thank you. Steve, did you have a question about the homeschool applications on the website? I know I had inquired about that for you, but were you seeing something different or?
No, you, you.
I answered it perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, um. One other thing that is not on the agenda, but I put it under new business real quickly. The Massachusetts Association of School Committee Conference. We had inquired to see if anyone was interested. Uh, I was interested, nobody else was interested at that time. I did uh, ask to go because if you apply early, you get the early bird discount. So at this point, I believe I'm going to the conference. I do think that they've changed. Uh, where they're not allowing any more people to go because COVID cases and all of that. So, first, I, are you all okay with me going? Okay, uh, and secondly, I would ask for a motion and second and vote. Uh, to represent the school committee as a delegate, at the delegate assembly, and that's where we would be voting on um, resolutions. Was there a motion to appoint me as a delegate for the Shute's Berry School Committee at the MASC Conference?
Still moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right, a roll call vote, haze eye?
Rose, I.
Thomas, pick an eye?
Solo, an eye.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Reports, superintendent?
Yes, I will be briefed this evening. Um, we had a wonderful opening day. It was uh, virtual this year due to. Uh, the COVID landscape, as it were, um, but we had, I think, a wonderful opening day. We had a welcoming speech by myself, leadership team greeted everybody. And about a year and a half ago, we were supposed to have a speaker Jonathan Mooney. Uh, he speaks to diversity in schools and learning and COVID came. And so we had him back virtually this year, um, and he was very well received. I heard lots of wonderful things. Um, the other piece of opening day was we did a restorative circle. Um, I think after moving through the pandemic, it was nice for people to talk about. Uh, what was the bright spot in that school year? What were some things they wanted to leave behind? And what were some things they wanted to bring forward? And we'll be looking at that as a leadership team. Um, I, I just think it's good feedback for us to hear from staff about how the year, the year of COVID went. We also um, are looking at uh, the SR three application. And we had um, an idea sharing committee. We put out a message to. Um, stakeholders and we had a wonderful group. We had two meetings. We got some feedback. At the first meeting, we did a strengths, weaknesses, opportunity and threats analysis. Of our districts relative to um, spending the money. And then the ticket to leave was uh, spend a dollar and everybody had four virtual quarters to um. Prioritize their ideas about where the ESR money should go. Of course, based on all the rules and regulations from the federal government and Desi about where we can spend it. Um, and then we had a stakeholder me- meeting, just a listening session and we had. Um, a nice group of people again as well. Um, a little quieter than our first two group, but still wonderful thoughts that I took notes on. And that really um, is going to help us as a leadership team narrow down how we're going to spend the money. We are, you know, the guidelines are around safety, health and wellness, social emotional learning. And twenty percent has to be spent on funding um. For learning loss and um, you know, one of the commitments we made with SR two money was to fund a shared. Adjustment counselor per two schools, so we have two adjustment counselors for our four Union twenty-eight schools. And we are really committed to continuing that. Um, you know, Desi's talking about. Learning loss this year. I, I think we're gonna see it over the next three to five years. And so we wanna make sure, not only for academics do we have supports in place, but we have supports in place. For students' emotional well-being and health. And lastly, um, the Rural Schools Coalition has turned into the Rural Superintendent's Roundtable. And um, I meet with them on Fridays and, virtually. And at the end of the month, we're going to have um, a meeting with. Area legislators, um, and my suggestion was that I bring um. Someone from the town side in one of our member towns. And a school committee member from one of our school committees, because they always, the legislators always see their superintendent's perspective, right? This is a time for them to hear our partners in education and our partners in the towns' perspective, so. Uh, Doug Tanner from Wendell is, is joining us virtually and he's done a whole host of uh, research on the cost of special education. Um, and so he's gonna briefly give us a synopsis of that at the presentation. And then Becky too, from Leverett, is going to talk about um, the school committee perspective. And crafting a budget that promotes educational excellence. Um, but the impact of our small rural towns, very small budgets. That rest mostly on our taxpayers' shoulders, so. I'm really hopeful that the legislators get a much broader perspective. Um, from our Union twenty-eight group, so I hope we represent well at the end of the month. And I will update you in October about how that went. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. All right, Bruce, Director of Finance and Operations?
Oh, we had pretty busy summer. As we talked about earlier, the roof drainage is in and, and the roof project is commencing eventually. Um, as you know, we set aside some money from last year to do some AC work in the um, building. Uh, we ended up putting a mini split in the server room. And tied that with the um, student support office. And then we put uh, air conditioning in the library. So that, if, in fact, we do some um. Summer school next summer, we have at least a place that uh, the kids can come and be cool. So we did some, and uh, if anybody wants to see it, it looks pretty nice. Um, we finished the year, as I promised I would, but we returned to the town twenty thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. Unfortunately, we missed the invoice that Becky's taking care of from another account, but anyway. And uh, um, spent quite a bit of time with our friends down in Amherst this summer, working on busing issues. But, but the big problem is, and as many of you are aware, is drivers. Even if we could change our routes around, we can't get people to, to drive buses and it's, it's. Everybody, anybody heard the uh, eastern part of the state, the governor's um, got National Guard troops. Driving buses, which. I have my thoughts about, that's what they're doing, so. And Steve can support, but we decided to start the year. Uh, with a route that included um, the work going to be done on the uh, culvert. Even though we're not sure when that's gonna be done, they didn't want to change routes. Start the year, change the routes and then go back to, so it's caused a little difficulty, but I think we've got some solutions. Hopefully, we'll get the culvert in pretty fast and we'll be changing again, so. That's what I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Bruce? Okay, it's early in the budget season, so. Um. Principals report, Jackie, I know you submitted it to us electronically. Did you also send that to Trevor?
I did send that to Trevor.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anything you'd like to highlight?
Um, well, we've just had a great, it's been really great seeing the kids, it's. It's still a little emotional when we see all the kids, like, when you hear laughing in the hallway. And when you see kids, you know, outside, running around and being children, um, it's just. Really amazing and it's really awesome to have them back at school. Um, there's just been a whole lot of, a whole lot of communication going on. Um, and I try to be as thoughtful as possible and I try to be as clear and not overwhelming as possible, but. A lot of the information that we're having to communicate is overwhelming and. I acknowledge that and I, I totally understand the way that caregivers are feeling when they receive that information. And I also try to keep that in the back of my mind when people respond not so pleasantly to things. And um, we try to answer all of our communications. With as much compassion and professionalism as we can, um, in the same time uphold confidentiality and stick to. The, the processes that we have to follow as a public school and um. So it's a, it's been, it's been an interesting three weeks um, with that. Um, thank you very much, uh, Bruce and Steve for some help with the bus company. It, that was also super hard and difficult. Um, working with the Amherst Transportation Office and Five Star, we kind of don't really have a say in much. Um, and that is really hard to communicate to the families because they think. That why don't you have a say? You're the, you're the school, like, why don't you have a say in what happens? And um, you know, we, we're trying to be as professional as possible in that as well and try to be able to figure out. Who we can direct our concerns to around the routes, but you know, and maybe. Um, Steve might be able to, to talk about it too, because I know he was gonna look down there, but we really don't have much say over routes. Or buses, um, so uh, hopefully that will change. Um, like, I, I, I don't need to talk about the school choice funds that I'm kind of hoping we get to use. Because you just heard how I kind of wanna use some of that money and some of our new staffing. Um, we also do, we, I had to hire two additional Paris this year for special education needs and so. That also might be something that Bruce and I need to talk about around maybe utilizing some of our school choice money for that. Um, but there are needs that legally we had to cover and so um, we needed to add more support there. I didn't need to put that second preschool in that the, that the school committee okayed. Um, we're using some of that school choice money because um, a lot of preschool parents. Didn't want the uncertainty of, of starting somewhere in a pandemic and maybe having to go remote. They, they're still thinking that maybe there wouldn't have been a consistent year. They also weren't keen on their, some of them weren't keen on their children. Wearing masks all day as little kids and um, uh, some people made other, other choices about where to send their kids. So we didn't need to put the second preschool in, but I really appreciate the support of that possibility. Um, as we all know, there were two COVID cases within our school community within the first week of school. Um, they were unrelated cases. There was no transmission within the school and that is something that I continue to tell families. Is that there was no transmission within the school, so um. Uh, we just, people have to keep that in their mind and, in the sense that we are, we have very strict mitigation. Factors and now with the outside masking, it's even more um, heightened and. Uh, you know, we, we follow the guidelines as swiftly as possible and I'm gonna say publicly here from our first case. We found out at nine thirty and, at night and by eleven thirty the next morning, our entire protocol had been followed. Including cleaning and notifying and contact tracing and Board of Health meeting. So we're not messing, we're not messing around, we're not like waiting, we are on it and we take it super seriously. And I just wanna publicly thank our school nurse Katie Harrington, who has been absolutely incredible in all of this. And uh, we could not do it without her. She's amazing and so I just wanna publicly thank her.
Yeah, she worked an entire weekend. Um, and so, thank you to Katie, um, from, I, I think all of us. Um, she doesn't have to work Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday, Sunday night, and she did because that's what she does because she's a school nurse. She's wonderful. Um, and before Jackie finishes, I know you all know this, um, but. Jackie has worked tirelessly through the entire uh, COVID pandemic and continues to. And always holds everyone with grace and compassion and kindness. And I am ever so lucky to work with her as, and I know you all feel that way, so.
Thanks, Dan.
I just wanted to share that with people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we still do have two open positions. I know people are always interested in, in, in that, um. Um, we still do have two open positions. I know people are always interested in, in that. We, we need after school workers and we still do have our math coach slash math interventionist position. It's a part-time position that is still open. I still get a whole lot of emails about things in general, but also tomorrow will be in, in the Roadtown News will be the invitation for any school community member who is interested in joining our school council. And we're going to be basically starting from scratch. All of our parent school council members have now aged out of the school. And so we, we, we'll start from scratch and hopefully we'll have some people who are interested in that. And then the final thing I just want to bring up, and I, maybe Steve will bring it up in his report, is that I'm starting to get some kind of panicked emails from, from the community around Amherst discussion around sixth grade, joining the middle school. And it was just in Superintendent Morris's latest memo or whatever. And I think that that really triggered some people. And so we, I, and I don't really have a lot of knowledge in necessarily what's going on with that decision down there. But I am receiving a lot of, not a lot, a handful of some people starting to be really nervous about that. And they also have just questions around like, how does that even work? And what does that mean for Shute'sbury? So I just wanted to just bring that up there, out there, and I'm all done now.
And Jennifer?
Yes, I just talked to Dr. Morris this week. And again, I'm sure Stephen has way more knowledge than I do, and he'll fill us in during his report. But he said just to share with you all that it's only Amherst moving up to the middle school. And it's really because of space and building issues that Pelham is not moving up to the middle school. And I've been talking with the chair from Leverett, and one of the things we were thinking is either having Dr. Morris come to our next school committee to talk about that move. And then if needed to have sort of a, a little mini town hall about what that means for Shute'sbury and Leverett. So I just wanted to put that out there so you know what we're doing in our sister town that feeds into Amherst. And if I could ask, our principal has to get up early tomorrow morning. She's in there doing bus duty. So I'd like to be able to say goodnight to her tonight, since we don't have much else on the agenda, if that's okay with the chair.
It's okay with me. I did want to just say one more thing to Jackie. Of course, the school committee, I'm sure all of us appreciate all that everyone is doing in the school. But, you know, keep us posted on ways that we can be helpful or assist you or supportive. Okay? All right. So any questions for Jackie before she heads out? All right. Good night, Jackie. Thank you. All right. Segues into Steve, Amherst Regional Pelham Report.
Oh, hi. All right, let's, let's play with the sixth grade first. It's actually not the regional school committee, except for the fact of allowing sixth graders into the middle school. We don't have anything else to do with it. So what, what I did was I started that conversation by saying that Shute'sbury would be more than happy to kick the door open for Amherst's sixth graders to go into the middle school. But they wouldn't be seeing Shute'sbury's kids for a long time. I know that in Pelham, they were super worried about Amherst going in, the sixth graders going in. But I, the way that the middle school works now, because a, a big concern was over the foreign languages. And if the sixth graders from Amherst were in there early, would they get a head start? And the answer is no, because the way it works now is seventh graders get the sample sum, and then they start as eighth graders. So sixth grade would not be seeing any foreign language. So that there's actually no head start for the Amherst sixth graders. It's all about space. Because their new school, they even, they haven't chosen a design yet, but neither one of them can really handle the sixth grade. So they're going, they are going to be at the middle school. And so a lot, the budget, the regional school committee is truly feeling exactly the same way that the Shute'sbury Finance Committee and that letter that you saw tonight, that's, it was interesting that it was the exact same conversation in both meetings that everyone was really irritated and fed up with the Amherst Town Council and their lack of knowledge, and they didn't, they didn't care to learn. So we are going to try and educate them, but I don't think it's going to go very well. And the only other thing that we had our first meeting was last week and that the high schoolers are enjoying having lunch outside because it's, it's kind of a step in the direction of an open campus again, because it's been a long time since they were allowed outside like that. And they are loving it, at least the ones that I have talked to. Thank you.
So Steve, just a quick question. I know I keep hearing about the space issues. Where would they put a couple of classrooms? Like, where, where do you have an idea?
Yeah, there's, in that, if you were standing in the upstairs of the library, part of that, that rectangle there would become the sixth grade. They would have their own entrance and their own classrooms. And they would not be, except maybe at lunch, would not be seeing the seventh and eighth graders.
And so it'd be in the library area?
Well, they'd be in the classrooms that surround the upper, upper library. Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Steve?
Oh, and this, this is gonna get the middle school to have the hallways painted for the first time in 30 years because that, that, that's going to be the up, update and upgrade to the middle school for the sixth graders. They're going to paint the walls.
Excellent. Glad to hear it. All right. Union 28, anything for Union 28? Nothing, right? Except we did get your letter that you are hoping that you're not chair again.
Right. We meet Monday.
Okay. All right. And I have nothing to report for the Collaborative Educational Services. So under future agenda items, I just want to point out, yep, we have our Union 28 meeting, and then I think our next school committee meeting is October 21st with policy starting at 6:30 and the rest of the committee on seven. And all those other things are on the agenda there at the bottom. All right. Is there anything else? Again, I want to thank everybody. Appreciate everybody's service to students and our community and working with me through technological difficulties and also working as a team. I always appreciate the fact that school committee members here are willing to listen, open their minds, open their hearts. They're willing to express their opinion, even if it's different from others, and I think that that's really important. So I appreciate all of you.
Dan, there's a. Thank you, Dan, for having such an open process to have a new member come on. It felt very clear and transparent, and I appreciate the work that went into that.
Oh, thank you. And was someone else speaking at the same time?
Yeah, there's a hand up. Melissa has her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Melissa.
Okay, I don't know when the appropriate time for the community to speak is. So forgive me if I waited to the end and this isn't the appropriate time. Is this, is this an okay time to voice concerns or?
You've got the floor. Go ahead.
Okay. Again, it's about COVID and, you know, I do want to say that I appreciate that all the school has done to keep our kids safe. A couple of my concerns is around reporting to families. As was mentioned earlier about the mask issue outside. What is considered by Desi is not considered, you know, safe by the CDC. And because those two aren't aligned and because our kids are closer than six feet apart in the classroom, I feel the need to be, and I know I'm not alone in this, to be notified when there is a case in the classroom. Because my kids are not vaccinated and they are at risk with a Delta variant. What this knowledge also allows me to be able to do is case in point, the, the first case was actually in one of my daughter's classrooms. I have a, I have one in second, fifth, and one in high school in ninth grade. So I, because of, you know, the social wires, so to speak, or the grapevine, I was able to find out that the, the case was in my fifth grade daughter's class. Which was really lovely because I have a 76-year-old mother in Conway who we were scheduled to visit. So because I knew that it was in her classroom, I, we still made the decision to go see my mom. But we visited outside. We all wore masks and we didn't hug. Because I knew that she was in this class, or meaning in that, the same classroom. If, but she was not on the close contact list, so I would not have been given any sort of notification other than the general email that was sent to the school or sent from the school. So that's, you know, that's my biggest concern. And I, my life before, before being a stay-at-home mom, I was a nurse and I am also a volunteer lactation counselor. So I'm very familiar with, with needing to keep information confidential. But sharing a, a classroom is not sharing an individual's health status. Going a step further would be to even know by, sorry, I tend to, I waver, so I apologize if I, I am not clear, but not only know that it's which classroom it's in, meaning if it's in my child's classroom, but to know when the student was tested, because that then gives me the information I need to know about. You know, maybe the student was tested four days earlier and that now my kids could be either, you know, asymptomatic, but still being able to spread the virus. Or this is when I need to look out for symptoms. I mean, my, two of my children have already stayed home from school because of, you know, it was nerves more than likely. But because they were kind of nauseous, they had a headache, they're really tired. And, but I, I kept them home to keep the community safe, to keep the school safe. With that extra information of when, when a student is tested, I then know when I need to test my kids, et cetera, et cetera, or when I should be looking out for that. So that is, that is my concern.
So just so you know how it works here, obviously, we all listened to what you had to say, but typically we don't respond because it's not a, it is not something on the agenda that we are here to discuss. So I appreciate you bringing, bringing it to our attention. I would again encourage you to talk with Jackie, as well as, you know, Jennifer. And we will leave it at that for this evening. Okay?
Can I, can I just ask about, because there's nothing on the website that says, you know, please get X, Y, Z document to us so that it can be included on the agenda? If there could be something on the, the town website about, please, you know, three days prior to the meeting, schedule date, can you get any, you know, whatever you want on the agenda?
Well, when someone has some concerns such as yours, it is something that we can put on the agenda. I mean, there's, there's not, the, the agenda is set by me along with Jennifer, and it's based upon whatever we think should be on the agenda. So as a parent, you can bring it up to a school committee member to, to any of us. And we can certainly put an item on the agenda for communicating information.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Is there anything else from the school committee members? All right. So we will leave it at that, and I will say this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and have a nice evening. Good night.
Good night.